The Common Council to order, I am going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Turner.
Here.
Vitale.
He is excused.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Eight present, one excused.
We have a quorum. We are going to do the pledge of allegiance next. However, Alderman Turner has yielded his duties to Boy Scout Troop 584. If you gentlemen want to come up front and you can lead us in the pledge, please rise if you are able.
Please go into the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Alderman Turner. We will move on to item D, public hearings this evening, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Ordinance to rezone property located at 5032 West Rogers Street from I-2 to I-1 Industrial.
Thank you. Mr. Sherwin, you're ready?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Steve Sherman, the manager of planning and zoning. First hearing this evening is for a proposed rezoning of a redevelopment site at 54th and Burnham on the south side of Burnham Street. This is a city-owned property. It's in total, the two parts are in total 10 acres, nine-acre portion and a smaller one-acre portion. The smaller one-acre portion is zoned I-2, heavy industrial, while the nine-acre portion is another industrial zone, a lighter industrial zoning. The purpose of this hearing is to rezone the smaller of the two lots from I-2, heavy industrial, to light industrial for consistency with the overall site, which will be combined into one 10-acre property for the future DPW, Department of Public Works facility. So this is the existing zoning map. You can see the two different shades of purple. The darker is the heavier industrial I-2 property. That's the one-acre portion. And the balance of the overall site, though, is I-1. So that's the intended proposed zoning to get them two synced for consistency. And this went before the city's planning commission last month and was recommended for council approval. It does work with our future land use plan, which calls for industrial zoning in this area. So there have been no objections to date, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Common Council on public hearing number one? All right, seeing none, are there any questions or comments on public hearing number one from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close our first public hearing. And we will move on to item two, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
Resolution to confirm and adapt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of various streets by concrete reconstruction.
Thank you. And Ms. Dieski and Mr. Hutter, whenever you are ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are here to discuss the reconstruction of four streets on our paving program this year. West Walker from South 56th Street to South 60th Street, West Rogers from South 76th Street to South 84th Street, South 89th Street from West Greenfield to West Orchard, and South 86th Street from West Washington to West Greenfield Avenue. Tonight, we're going to talk about the projects, each street globally together, and then we'll talk a little bit about each street. We'll talk about how we calculated the assessments, what the assessment rates are. We can take, we'll take comments from the Common Council and the citizens that are here tonight. Then the public hearing gets closed. The Public Works Committee then takes that up and reviews it, makes a recommendation back to the Common Council, which will take it up at the end of the night tonight. So we recommended these streets for reconstruction because there's severe pavement deterioration on these streets. These are just some examples of what deterioration would look like on a street. It's cracking, it's heaving, it's rutting, it's just general deterioration of the street. When we look at the streets, not only do we look at the surface of the street, but we also look at what's underneath the street, the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer, and the water main. So in many of our streets, these included, we look at replacing the water main because a lot of our water mains are from the 1910s and the 1920s, making them 90 to 100 years old. We replace the main in the street with PVC and the laterals that go to your property to the curb stop with either copper or HDPE, which is a type of plastic pipe. We also redo our storm sewer with concrete pipe, but you can get a lateral out to your property if you have your gutters that are underground that come out and you want to connect that to the storm sewer. That's an option on these projects. But those storm sewers are also from the 1910s and the 1920s. And then we also look at the sanitary sewer, which takes the wastewater from your property down to the treatment plant. And these are replaced with PVC pipes in there, again, pretty old pipes. So we look at the project holistically. Everything that's in that street, we try to take care of at one time. So when we talk about West Walker Street, here's a breakdown of the approximate cost, what our estimates are for the project. We believe the pavement, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main are going to total around $1 million. West Rogers Street, which is a very long street, is going to cost, we estimate, around $2 million. 89th Street is $1.2 million. And then 86th Street is 1 point, almost $1.7 million. So it's a lot of money that the city is investing in those projects. And when we look at repairing streets and sewer and water, we look at the different funding sources. Not everything comes from the special assessment. The project isn't funded 100% by that. In fact, you can see the smallest portion of the special assessments fund, the smallest portion of the project, we utilize property taxes, storm water utility funds, water utility funds, and sanitary utility funds in addition to the special assessments. So to calculate your special assessment, we look at the per-foot cost, so the width of your lot. The assessment rate this year for a residential property is $68.31 per foot. So the cost to replace the street sewer-water, for the street, excuse me, is $3,700. Then there's an additional $8.53 per square foot for your driveway approach. That's the part between the sidewalk and the street where you access your driveway. We've sent you an estimate of that. And then if the project moves forward, the final bills wouldn't be mailed out until we finish the construction and get the contracts closed out in March of, around March of 2025. We did include in your mailing, and we include here some sample payments of what that could be. We do charge interest, 4% interest on our special assessments, but that's, the city isn't making, that's not a profit that we make on that. That's to help pay off the debt that we use, we incur from borrowing for the projects. Cities have used, West Dallas and other cities have used special assessments for a very long time. It is a very tried and true methodology. West Dallas sets a rate for all the different properties at the beginning of the year, and this methodology has been upheld by Wisconsin state law for a very long time. The reason that a lot of communities do this type of assessment is because we are allowed then to charge non-tax paying entities, tax-exempt properties, their fair share of the road project. Schools, churches, hospitals, county parks, all have to pay that special assessment, so they're sharing in that cost just like every resident in the city. Our schedule for this project, we've been designing these projects over winter here, and we will be bidding them out very soon through March through June, maybe. And then we'll start working on them in the spring. Once the contractors are chosen through the public bidding process, construction happens summer, fall. And then what we do is we, once we know the schedule of the project, we will send a letter to every property owner along the street to give you the schedule and contact information. You can also sign up for our construction in progress reports, and you can get an email every week. Mr. Hutter does that and keeps track of that very nicely for everybody. So if this project, if these projects move forward, I would encourage you to sign up because that's the best way to get up-to-date information every week on these projects. And with that, we conclude our presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the Common Council on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Elder Person Keen.
Melinda, what was the difference in cost from, for the 85th and Greenfield to Walker compared to Greenfield and Orchard? Is it because there's more driveways? Or is it more blocks? What resulted in the difference of cost? One was 1.2, I think, and one was 1.6?
I think it's longer, a little bit longer of a stretch of road, and there are more properties. That means more laterals to each home.
Okay.
And that results in the higher price.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Elder Person Stefanski.
Melinda, real quick question. With the new stuff with the laterals going with PVC, do we have any kind of life expectancy with PVC now, since we've gotten almost 100 years out of some of the laterals?
PVC has been around for quite a while. Just because the laterals that are in place have been there for 100 years, they may not be serving as well because they have open joints. Roots get in there more often, so then residents have to pay more for having, like Rotaruder or another company come out, clean the roots out. They can also then get backups. Plastic PVC pipes don't have that opportunity as much. So plastic is actually, even though the other pipes have lasted a long time and been there, they haven't been functioning at their highest efficiency possible.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? If there is, please come up to the podium and turn on the microphone with the button that has a little person on it, and then please give us your name and address for our record.
Ray Manuel Robinson, 5704 West Walker. My question is, I live on the corner of 57th and Walker, and about 10 years ago, you replaced Walker and did about eight slabs of concrete on, I'm sorry, replaced 57th and did about eight slabs of concrete on Walker. And those are very good. They're not going to be replacing those, are they?
Are you talking about sidewalk?
The sidewalk, correct. Sidewalk slabs.
If they're in good condition, we would look at trying to save them. I don't have your specific property in front of us, but we've got your address, and we can try to get your contact information afterwards, so we can look at that specifically. If we don't get to connect after this, please call the engineering department, and we can look at it specifically.
Okay, because they're better than some of the new ones that are in.
Well, we certainly would want to try to save what we could.
Yeah.
If all the grades match with the new road.
The other thing, if you have a lateral that's being replaced, that's under that sidewalk, that might be a reason. If it does get replaced, that would be a possibility.
No, it's not there, so. Okay. And then one other question. The bill, when would that be? Would it be after all the construction is done?
Yes, yes. Not till 2025, March, April of 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emily Pepraki. I live at 2001 South 79th Street. So I'm on Rogers. First, I want to say I appreciate West Dallas' support of making important infrastructure investments. It's important that we have this for our community. My one concern is with the road being repaved, we already have a lot of really fast drivers cutting through on Rogers, and I'm wondering if there's any speed reduction measures that have been planned?
We are looking at doing some bump outs on 77th and 83rd, I believe it is, because there are some controlled intersections in between there. So we are looking, and we are also on the other intersections, we have to replace the corners and put in compliant ADA ramps. So we're making those, the curvature of those such that it's going to make people slow down and have to take a purposeful right turn or left turn. It's going to look narrower because we have to facilitate the ramps and the grades to meet the ADA requirement. So it's kind of working together to help reduce the speeds. But we are planning specific bump outs at either end of the project, so.
Is that going to narrow the amount of space people have to park on either side of the road?
It does impact that. So there, you know, there's a trade-off, but we'll try to minimize that as much as possible and keep as much parking as possible. But the bump outs are very good tools, and they create shorter pedestrian crossing area, and it make the road look narrower, so cars do, and drivers tend to slow down to that visual cue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judith Phillips. I own the property at 1464 South 89th Street. My mother-in-law's parents built that property 80 years ago, not 100. So that street is not as old as what you're referencing here. The photos that you're referencing with the buckling and heaving is also not present on 89th Street. This house has been in our family. My daughter and my grandson live there now, so that is five generations. And to be perfectly honest with you, this would create a financial hardship that we would not be able to overcome. We would have to sell the house. I'm, I realize that I am one person, but my daughter is a veteran who is trying to support herself and a baby. And my husband and I cannot afford to pay for our home and our property taxes. And the property taxes, we just paid on this house, and we'll pay on this house next year, and absorb what is more likely going to be $5,000 than $4,000, as you've estimated at this time. You know, what is your response to the hardship this creates for the people who have lived there for 80 years?
So the city of West Dallas, the amount we sent you is the most we can bill you. So that is the most, that's the highest that it would be. So it's not going, the cost isn't going to increase to you unless we would come and have you sign a waiver and get your permission to exceed it. Secondly, we have a payment plan that you can pay over 10 years for the improvements. It goes on your tax bill. And so, and again, there is some interest charged with that, but that does give a payment plan for people to try to make that more affordable cost and budget it more regularly. So.
So this is not a hearing on whether or not this is going to happen. This is a hearing on, good luck to you, is my question.
The hearing, the Common Council has to make the decision whether to move forward with the projects or not. So they are hearing your concerns. I can only tell you what policies the city has in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on public hearing number two? All right, then we will close public hearing number two. Thank you, everybody, for your questions. As was stated earlier, this will go to committee during recess, and then it will be voted on then. We'll move on to item E, which is public participation. This is where the council may receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker must announce their name and address, sign in at the podium, and limit their comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. The council cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers and will not discuss topics with the speakers. Does anybody wish to address the council under public participation this evening?
Marty Weigel, 2670 South Seymour. Mayor Devine, Alderman, elder persons and staff and attending people, I just have a couple of things I want to touch on. You guys may regret having public participation before Alderman and Mayor remarks because I might be mentioning some things that you guys have been working, we'll be talking about. First of all, the Toad Race, the Tour of America's Dairyland Bike Race, which is scheduled for, our third year this year, got a very prestigious upgrade this year. It was announced that the race, instead of being on the traditional Tuesday night that it has been, has been moved to the Friday. That's, I think, a statement about the effectiveness of our staff, the volunteers, and the way the community embraced and supported the race, that the operators of the whole series have decided to move this professional bike race from a Tuesday to a Friday in West Dallas. And a big thank you to Mark Lutz, the major sponsor of that, at West Dallas Cheese and Sausage. I think we all are familiar with Mark and what he does over there on Beecher Street. Second thing I want to talk about is the firefighters' beer tasting is this week, is this weekend at Ope Brewing. Tickets are still available. The West Dallas Firefighters, it's their major charity fundraiser for the year. Looks like over a dozen breweries will be there. Tickets are still available. There's a link on the city website. I don't think you can get tickets at door typically, but tickets should still be available. I believe they're $35. I wanted to thank the parks, our parks, I shouldn't say park staff, our public works staff and forestry for the great cleanup work that they did at the dog park. Our early spring, was it spring or were we in summer already? I'm not sure. But our shortened, our shortened winter means that they didn't have the frozen ground and the snow all, you know, it got a little muddy real quick. But crews were out there doing quite a bit of wood chipping on the paths and the muddy areas, so the dog park is dog-ready. I mean, it was never closed, but it's in really good shape. Two more things. Something that's a little controversial now, daylight saving time starts this Saturday. I don't know if the mayor was going to remind everybody to set your clocks ahead on Saturday night.
Not anymore.
Not anymore. Sorry, I seem to be stealing your thunder. And then in my recent move to the west side of West Dallas, I realized that there isn't a friends group at Greenfield Park. Greenfield Park is a real gem in our community. It's obviously a county park, and there's a lot of activity there between Cool Waters and the golf course. So I reached out to the park manager to see what maybe her thoughts were on the needs that could be there. And reaching out to the community, I don't know that we're going to form a formal friends group under the auspices of the park people, or if it's just going to be kind of a volunteer organization. So we're not calling it the Friends of Greenfield Park because it's not a formal friends group yet. It may evolve into that. Right now, I'm calling it Greenfield Park Supporters, GPS. I think that people can remember GPS. And to that end, I started a Facebook group. For your younger people here, Ask Your Mom and Dad's. Facebook was a very common, widely-used social media thing when the internet first started, if you're not familiar with it. So if you just look for Greenfield Park Supporters, if you're interested. We don't really have any plans yet. I'm just trying to see what kind of energy is in the community for what we'd like to see there, whether it's tree planting, invasive species removal, you know, candlelight walks, picnics, prairie restoration, whatever, whatever we think would fit there and that would go with what the parks' mission is for the space. So I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening? Could you hit the button to turn on the microphone, please? The little person. It is, huh? I don't see a green light. Okay.
There's green lights.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Hi, my name is Ivy Messino. My address is 2105 South 89th Street. I would like to bring to attention the corner of 86 and Beecher in front of Franklin Elementary. Cars do not follow the law. Multiple times this year alone, kids have been almost hit. Our crossing guard is almost getting hit multiple times a week. It's happened. There's been enough close calls where police officers had to be called a few times already this year. I have a seven-year-old that goes there, and we walk there every day. And we've witnessed cars just blowing through our crossing guard. Our crossing guard's daughter is not comfortable with her mother being our crossing guard for her safety, and I do not blame her. I've talked to many parents, and everyone that I've talked to is unhappy with how unsafe that corner is. We've considered doing either, we've had a police officer there. We've had an officer sitting there monitoring it, and it gets a little bit better when they're sitting there. We've had the speed monitor thing out, but since when it's there, it says that the speed limit is 30, and it should be 15 when children are present. The school sign is blocked by a tree. You cannot see it unless you're about two car lengths away from the actual intersection, and by then it is too late. We were talking about possibly doing speed bumps or installing a roundabout or bump outs or something because we need to slow down the traffic before a kid gets hurt. I have spoken to alderwoman Dana, and I really appreciate everything that you've done so far. Just wanted to bring that up to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would encourage you also to, if you can, touch base with, if engineering staff is still out in the hallway, because we have been, have meetings with the school district and engineering on several schools, including this one. So it is something that we can definitely dive deeper into.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hi. Are we talking about the bump outs next after this, or should I address it now?
Bump outs for where?
For, I got a letter in the mail. I have the property on 2002 South 83rd and 8223 Rogers, and I got a letter in the mail for the proposed bump out for the bump outs for the affected properties.
Yeah, this is public participation, so you can talk about really anything you want to.
Sure, okay. Well, that's mainly why I came here, because I own that property. It's affected by it. It's a pretty large bill for me to take on. I'm really a proponent of, like, road safety. I do care about, like, people speeding, but I think there might be a more cost-effective way to be able to do it, maybe something like speed bumps, per se, that could cost a lot less money, like, on the road, like they've gotten in other parts of the city. And then I also hear that, like, you know, it's very expensive. Is there a consideration of maybe doing a city millage? Because I don't want to take on the full cost of a bump out when it does positively affect so many people in the area.
I can, I can talk to you during recess, just because I can't really debate, date with you just right now.
Okay, sure.
But yeah, I can, when we break for recess shortly, I can, I can fill you in a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. If you can stick around, that is. Okay, thank you. Any other public participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close public participation. Our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on the top of page two on your agenda. So if you are here for a license or to attend a meeting, please check those room numbers. And if you have any questions, please ask one of us when you break for recess as to which room you should be in. Moving on to item G, the mayor's report. I just have a few small things. Got a little smaller because of Marty Weigel, but I want to just thank Nathan Hale High School for their invite, and I know our community development director, Patrick Schloss, was there as well. We were able to be jury members for some of the projects that the students were working on for housing and looking at housing challenges in the city. They based it on the Burnham block of Frank Light Wright in Milwaukee, and they were looking at how to redesign homes. And the news showed up, and it was really a good positive event coming out of the city. A lot of students really putting together some impressive projects. Also, our staff and I have been on a lot of small business visits in the last couple of weeks. A lot of those visits and stories and info on the businesses are posted on our social media. I won't go into all the details tonight because there were about four or five of them, but I just encourage you to check those out. And And lastly, I just want to wish my wife a happy birthday. She might be, she might be glad that I'm out of the house tonight at a council meeting, so, but I just want to tell Renee a happy birthday. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the elder persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of the February 6, 2024, common council meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any, are there any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Standing committee reports, we have none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
If there's no objection from any council member or any item that they want acted upon separately on the consent agenda, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
That was melodic. There's a motion and a second. We'll give it to elder person Grisham. If there's no discussion, it's the clerk to call the roll.
Elder person Turner. Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Branki.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Aiden favors your opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess.